Glad to welcome everybody to the, what's this, June 16th, 2025 Madison County School Board Meeting. We are, got a young man is supposed to say our prayer, Ms. Jada, if you want to introduce him.
Good evening. Major Ten's Madison County Central students, okay. He'll be a third grader this upcoming school year. He loves school and he loves his friends. During his spare time, he'd like to ride his bicycle and play with his friend Silas. Now, please welcome Major Brady.
Welcome, Major Brady.
Welcome, Major.
It's all stand.
Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, please guide our superintendent and school board members as they aim to make the best decisions possible so all students in the Madison County School District will be afforded, afforded a quality education with the best available resources. We also want to thank God for the lawyer so that he can contend you to provide legal advice. Lord, I'm asking that you give each of them a necessary tool to make Madison County School District the best. Amen.
Amen.
All right, I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Major.
That one's ever remembered. Appreciate it.
Don't ever pray for me. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to the agenda. We have some amendments to the agenda tonight. We are moving the 5.2 consent agenda, Madison County School Employee 2025-26 School Calendar. Be moving that to 6.8. We are moving the amendment, Badge Pass, and Rod, we'll need you to speak on that if you can, to 6.1A, that is item for individual consideration. And then we are moving.
Where was that one from? The Badge Pass?
That's up there in the, in the agenda. It's got a, up there amendments. There's a little thing up there by the agenda.
2.1.
2.1.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. We don't have very many down. Then we're going to be moving the requests, 6.4, Item 1, Request to Update Staffing Plan. We're going to move that to 6.9. Does anybody else have any amendments to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion?
Let me say something first, and it goes back to the personnel. We've got 10 things listed on there, and to me, there should be some discussion with a couple of them, not all of them.
I just moved.
I mean, extra hours is fine, you know. Okay, the number one, the intervention is, that's the one we're moving, you said?
That's what I'm.
Okay.
And you can discuss them if you need to.
Okay, well, we'll leave it at that for now, then. Okay. But it's quite a bit for, well, that's just me, okay. Go ahead.
All right, do I have a motion for?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the agenda.
Right.
We have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Hagan to accept the agenda with the amendments, right?
Correct.
Any more discussion on it? Not? All in favor? Five zero. Okay, at this time, do we have any public comment?
What's there?
Was there any? No public comment? All right, good. So we'll move on. That was 4.1. 3.1 was a community partner schools, Ms. Martin, Tiffany Martin, she's not here. Dr. Pickles is going to explain that during the superintendent.
Yeah, I'll speak to it after.
So now we're going to the consent agenda. We have minutes, 5.1 minutes, 5.3, the RFP Solid Waste, 5.4, the Mad- Madison County Summer Football Calendar, 5.5 Autism Spectrum Disorder Add-on Endorsement, 5.6 Allied Instructional Services Contract, 5.7, the Smith Therapy LLC Contract, 5.8, the Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreements, 5.9 Fundraiser Requests, 5.10 is the Field Trip Requests. Do I have your motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on it?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, on the 5.3, that RFP, it's got a bid tabulation, and I think what y'all are intending to do is award the little bid.
Logan.
Right?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it's set down.
Let me hold on just one second. Just one second. Okay. We had a motion and a second, right? I already said who did what. Any more discussion on consent agenda? Not? Do I need to read out the, on the bids?
No.
I don't, okay. All in favor? Five zero. Okay, now we're going to 6, 6.1.
6.1. I will be doing that only because Mr. Rutherford is boarding a plane and not here this evening. So we have a reductive change order. It's actually removing a couple of items that the board actually purchased. So we were able to purchase the lighting and saving the sales tax, so thereby reducing the order there. So you'll see that if you look over on page three, I believe it was, so is where it starts. So you'll see there. So we save, we purchased the $85,000 light, so we saved that. So we went down from $760,000 down to, I think it was like six, six six six. So we, yeah, we saved quite a bit.
We add a dollar to that.
I don't like the six 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 either. So that's where we had a couple of change orders in there, so that we reduced it, actually also doing some of the demo work with the ag. So by doing some of that, we do have that reduction in the change order. So I do recommend the approval for the items.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion for the deduct charge order for the sports complex and ag?
I move to approve the deductive change order for sports complex and ag.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Gibson, to approve the deduction change order for sports complex and ag. Is there any more discussion on this?
I do have questions. I know that he's not here, so we might have to maybe follow up with this. You may or may not know. But where are we on the Ag Barn and the greenhouse? Is there been any updates?
We're still waiting on the insurance. We're still working with the insurance, and we have to schedule another meeting for the buyout. We have not actually received.
So that is still pending. Did we get the estimate from the electrician?
Yes, that has also been submitted.
Okay.
And so I think that's where we're kind of waiting.
Okay, and what about the status of the signage and items pending?
I've received another quote and submitted, emailed that, so there's a few other items. So we're, we're still working through this whole long laundry list of items with our insurance company.
But the, the holdup right now is the settlement with FSBIT?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With our insurance.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Okay, 6.1A, Mr. Williams, the Badge Pass.
Good evening.
At the beginning of the year, as we do every year, we went over the EFSA, the School District's Best Practices. Inside that was a project for the high school to revamp the, the software for the, and access control, the doors and the card system. The system that's at the high school now is antiquated and outdated, and Isaac and I have been searching to try to find the right fit. And since we already used Badge Pass already for the access control systems that we use at Central School, we figured it'd be best to go ahead and go with that company that came with the best, the best deal, to go ahead and rip and replace and install new access control at the high school. And access control is the exterior doors using card swipes to get in and out places in there. Yes.
Do all the employees get one of these? I mean, how does this work?
Yes, all employees will get cards, just like, just like they have now, but it'll just be updated.
Have we not looked at a system that would be beneficial to use in both schools so that, you know?
That's the reason.
So like for, like for district staff who's going into both schools to not have two different badges, is, is it going to operate, the same badge will function at Central and at the high school?
Yes.
That's the reason for going back with Badge Pass, so we can.
So do we get one, the board members?
I would assume so.
Yes. Hope so, thank you, just terrified.
Yes, ma'am.
The existing district cards will be used at the high school. It's the same system we already use?
Okay.
Well, I know, I have asked multiple times. I know our, my badge personally does not let me in anywhere. So I don't know, that's why I'm asking. You know, I know that we have, you know, people who should have easy access to the schools, like an SRO, whose badge does not work. So, you know, these are things that I want to make sure are not going to be an issue moving forward with the new system.
Yes, ma'am.
These are requests that I have put in previously.
And we will be all issued new ones?
No. He's saying it's the same badge.
Yeah, it's the same system, so.
Mine doesn't work.
So I think that's just a, a thing of reprogramming, all right?
Okay, reprogram.
Thank you for clarification.
That's probably, that's probably a box you wouldn't check.
So.
Probably one of the little boxes you got to check when you're doing.
It's something little, but I'm sure we'll get over that.
So another question that I have is, because I know we have discussed it in the past, is does this system have any of the emergency lockdown features or anything like that, or this is just in and out to get into the building?
It does have emergency lockdown features, although these doors are locked all the time. So there's, it's not as needed because they're always locked anyways.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't say not as needed, when, you know, we need to be making sure that the PA system and everything, you know, the alert systems work in the school. That's been a problem for the past year, you know, and so if you have pre-K who, you have a lockdown going on and pre-K doesn't know that the school's on lockdown and they're letting kids out on the playground, that's a safety concern for me, that, you know, I want to make sure that these things are not happening.
Two totally different systems.
But with, I just know that we've, we've sampled badge systems that would, would alert and do all of that.
Centegix has a system.
So I just, I just want to know, like, the capabilities of this one, because if this is the same system we're currently using, you know, I know it's cheaper, but, you know, is the safety of our children worth saving a couple of dollars? That's, that's my question.
Have we, have we gotten a quote from Centegix? Do you guys recall?
The last quote we got from Centegix was about twice as much.
Okay.
And that, and that wasn't access control, that was for.
Okay. And it was not, okay.
Okay.
It's added sometime in the future that we could tag on.
Right.
To a system that we have now.
Yeah, I mean, this, this system may have more capabilities that we're not purchasing at this time. I'm just asking what the capabilities, you know, can this be built out to additional features, or are we pretty much limited to where we are in what we're purchasing?
This is pretty much strictly ID management and.
So just in and out? Okay.
Understood, just being in compliance with the laws.
With the safe schools, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion? We need to wait till we get a motion, then we can discuss, but.
Well, it had already started, so we just went down the rabbit hole. Sorry, Frankie.
So do we have a motion for 6.1A Badge Pass?
I move to approve the Badge Pass system for Madison County High School.
My second.
Have a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Ms. Thompson to approve the Badge Pass system. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you, Mr. Rodd.
Thank you.
Right now, we're going to 6.2, Fleet, Florida Education Health Trust.
During our last meeting, you heard from Mr. Ted Roush, who is now with FADS, regarding the fleet participation. I did upload the presentation, and I also uploaded the participation agreement. So the agreement just gives them the ability to go ahead and start working with us to start analyzing the self-insurance process for our district. It is a cost savings measure, anywhere from six to, up to 14 to 20 percent. We are investing in ourselves, so I do encourage the agreement, the participation agreement, I do recommend that, to go ahead and just start that analysis for us. They will not talk to us otherwise until we begin this agreement process.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the Florida Education Health Trust.
My second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Knight to approve the Florida Education Health Trust Agreement. Any discussion?
I think Dr. Pickles hit on it, but the purpose of us doing this tonight is to, for analyzing.
Yes, ma'am.
Strictly analyzing. Otherwise, the ball doesn't get rolling. So we have to, so that's what we're doing tonight.
Analysis.
Thank you.
And I think what you're saying is, before the, the district would be obligated to participate or pay any money, it has to come back to this board for.
Yes, that's, that's, thank you.
This gets the ball rolling.
Gets the ball rolling, right.
Same thing with another item I'll discuss later.
And if it's, say, if the premiums get lowered, which I was in that category, I'm all for it, because they pay a tremendous amount of money for their insurance.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Five zero. All right, 6.3, Union Ratification.
Our union reps met probably a month ago now, and this union ratification was the result of our two days that we needed to forgive, and then also it's something that came out of the sports committee that met. So they now will have this rubric that they have to complete in order to receive their supplement, so whether it's a sports or a, a club, so they'll do this, and then those supplements will now be paid three times a year instead of monthly. So the union has ratified this, and then they brought it back to me to sign all funds, and I will bring it to the board for approval. So I do recommend this.
Do I have a motion for the union ratification?
I move to approve the union ratification.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Hagan to approve the union ratification. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Okay, 6.4, Personnel Changes with the.
I'll start them.
With the Item 1, move to 6.9.
So we're going to start with number two. So number, you'll notice that I created a different form, and so we will begin sharing this out with administrators. It adds a justification once we actually, at FSBA FADS this week, there was a section or session on strategic planning. So there was that, and we actually do need to update our strategic plan. So I will go back and add that statement in there because I really want to tie things back into our strategic plan, but there is a justification for requests for each item. And my computer just died. So the first item there was the mentors to request. It's, it's just me being honest. Oh, do you have that? I don't know what it's doing. My computer is just going to fire. Thank you. So.
Will you repeat the last statement that you made, please?
So the justification is, has been added in, and it's going to be added into each request we now make.
Okay.
So for the, number two, for the mentor that, those extra hours for the mentors. So it's just providing that, fulfilling their request for all of the mentors where they already fulfilled their requirements, and we're just paying them their stipend that they are due. So that's number two. Number three is the extra hours for curriculum. So this is to, Gilonda is requesting to have Ms. French assist her and Ms. Pride with the curriculum. They actually were out at Lee today, so she's only requesting 25 hours. So that is the request there for her. Number four is actually an extra hours request for Mr. Christmas. He will be teaching a K5 STEM class at Central, which that is something he needs to develop. So as part of that, Ms. Brown is requesting 40 extra hours to develop the curriculum and the necessary supplements that he will be using. Number five is the extra hours request for our MTSS staff at Central to be over, be able to analyze and go through the data reviews now that all the students are coming in. So that extra hours request for the MTSS staff. Number six is actually FEMA payments for three individuals. These individuals were assigned at the Madison County EOC. It is my understanding, the staff were told that they would be paid by the EOC. However, the Madison EOC does not pay anyone except their employees. So they are not an employee of Madison County, they are our employees, so they are still paid by us. Did take a lot of digging, things like that, I had to get their sign-in sheets, looked at our pay records from when they were signing in and make sure there was no overlapping, so those are the hours. Two had actually inquired about the extra hours. One individual does not even realize their name is on this list. So that's the request. After speaking to Mr. Reeves, he had just said, make sure I had everybody all at one time, so I was not having to piece build this. So that's all the individuals that were paid, needing to be paid, that worked at the EOC. Number seven and number eight are instructional recommendations for the high school and then Central. There is a correction for, I don't think it's on the Central list. So you have the Central School list printed for you. Due to its late arrival, we were having to double-check it, and there were a couple of teachers, we were having to double-check their pending certification to make sure we could add them to the list. We had a couple that were on the list provided, however, based on certification, I cannot add them at this time. They do have their test scheduled, and as soon as they pass their test, we will go back and recommend them. Number nine is the Assistant AD Job Description, and that is what has been used. It is a supplement-only position, same as the, when we actually did the Academy-wide. It's not a full-time position, it is supplement pay only. So that's all based off what the union negotiates. Right now, that's all it is. So those are those. Do we pull number, did we move number 10? I don't think.
No, we didn't move.
We didn't move that one. Number 10 is at your desk. So number 10 is three pages long. So we do have four instructional recommendations, one non-instructional recommendation, which is now Mr. Copeland, they did his interview last week. And then there's two reassignments. One of the reassignments, she's currently at the high school. She's just going from an out-of-field position to a position she's actually certified in, and it's a vacant position. And then you'll see we have lots of resignations, retirements, and then verbal decline. I do want to go ahead and add, if you will allow me to, add one more resignation because it's come in right at the start of the board meeting. So I do have one more resignation to add. And then even after us reviewing all the non-instructional support staff multiple times, there's one individual I need to remove. So on this list, I do would like to amend and add Danielle Miller, effective June 30th. She has submitted her resignation, effective as a teacher at Lee. She has submitted her resignation effective as a teacher at Lee. And then on the non-instructional list, after multiple people reviewing, we still missed Ms. Tamesha Glee. So we will cross off her name.
Who?
Tamesha Glee. So I do recommend the personnel changes. We are welcome to discuss any of them. But I do at least on item 10, if you'll oblige me and add that because that will help with contract payout.
Okay. Um, on the Madison County, I'm going to have to, for my sons on that Madison County High School.
Then let's pull, let's move that one to vote separately.
And I'll go down to.
On Central and the high school.
Okay.
So I guess we can vote on two, three, four, five, six, and nine and 10. And then we'll just vote separately.
So you can do one motion for all of those at one time and then we'll do the other one separately. If, if the board wants, all free to do it one at a time as you want, Todd.
All right, let me, let me ask first, I mean, let me go ahead and ask. Well, let me just ask for a motion first and then we'll, we'll work on that. We have a motion for, to approve the personnel changes with the, with the eight and nine being omitted, one being omitted.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight, I'm sorry, seven and eight. Seven and eight, and then one's already down.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the personnel recommendations with all the necessary corrections that have given, been given to us by the superintendent.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Okay, I got a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the personnel changes that Dr. Pickles explained to all to us. So now it's a new discussion.
Okay, did we, we, did we take off number nine? You did say take off number nine for this one, didn't you?
No, I know, we took off seven and eight.
Okay.
We didn't take off.
All right, well, let me go back to number nine then. Um, I was under the impression, and this is just a comment, I was under the impression that the A.D. was created to eliminate the Central's physical A.D., let's say, to save money. But now this is being brought back to the board here. Is this going to, is this person going to be, um, will they be, uh, any of their classes eliminated or anything like that? Okay, that's going to.
No, and it's still just the same supplement amount.
This is a supplement, right.
And, and the countywide A.D., that's just a supplement too.
Okay, so that's, all right. But, but we did eliminate Central's, I don't know what you call it.
No, no, technically we can't eliminate it. That has to be bargained through the, the union.
Well, when, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we, we approved the, the recommendation of the sports committee.
Right.
We approved that, the recommendations of the sports committee. That's where that other came from, where they, you know, want to do the supplements.
Right.
Uh, different than every month, make sure they do their job before they get the money, that's it. So when we approved that, that, the, uh, the assistant A.D. was on that.
Mm-hmm.
On that recommendation to, to help, not to, because our countywide A.D. is also the football coach.
Right.
Therefore, when he, in the fall, when he's doing that, somebody has got to look after the middle school stuff. And, uh, I'm talking about when they playing.
Right.
So that's where that all came from.
I got you there.
So that's why that was, that was.
Okay, but, but we did, so we did not eliminate the Central's, um.
It's not going to be called Madison County Central, uh, A.D.
No, no, I realize that, yeah. Okay, well, that was just.
That position is no longer that exact.
Here I go, losing my thing.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification, let's say.
Any more?
But I just want to make sure that we're not saying, no, you can't teach classes because you've got this and.
And it still all has to be bargained as far as any dollar figures. If you decide that you want to give an increase, so when, when the board goes to bargaining with the union, that all still has to be bargained and decided upon that time.
Okay. Uh, let's go down to employee resignation, termination, and retirement. Okay, Chris, Kristy Minor, explain that, Madison County Central School A.P.
So she was offered the position.
But it wasn't on the agenda, though.
No, so she verbally declined the position in our last meeting.
Okay.
I could not sit here and actually offer the position to Ms. Anderson tonight till I had something on here.
Okay, but I don't think that we approved, which I know she was offered the position. But as far as approving her for that position.
I had not placed her on the agenda the last meeting.
Right.
So she would have been put on this one.
Okay, so.
I think you're saying that since the board didn't approve it, why, why do we have to approve a resignation? That's a good question.
But I know she was offered it, yes.
Yeah, well, it, it's not going to hurt you to go ahead and approve the, and she did show up and expressly.
Right.
Decline it, but I don't know that it's required, but it wouldn't hurt you to do it either.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of the personnel changes as, as Dr. Pickles explained to us? If you're in favor of that, raise your hand. Five zero. Okay, now, let's see what we have.
So we need to do number seven, which is the high school.
Yes, yes, we need to do, uh, Madison County Annual Recommendations. And I'm going to have to approve myself, so I'm going to have to pass it over to, uh, Ms. Thompson for my son.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel recommendations for Madison County High School?
I move to accept the Personnel Recommendations for Madison County High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first from, uh, motion for Ms. Knight, a second from Ms. Gibson to approve the personnel changes for Madison County High School. Can we have a vote? All in favor? Four zero.
I wanted to back it.
She did want to back it.
All right.
Now we'll do number eight, the Central School.
All right, uh, Madison County Annual Recommendations for the Madison County Central School. Do I have a motion to approve the annual recommend? Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Mr. Chair, approve the recommendations for the Madison County Central School.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson to approve the recommendations. Any, any discussion on this?
I recuse myself because my husband is on that list.
I just have a quick question, and I think I asked you this, but I did not write it down. How many vacancies do we still have pending for teaching?
When we spoke on, so there's one position at the high school. And I believe there's three at Central. I actually tried calling her just before. Most of these resignations we already knew about. We did, and we kind of penciled, had a little mark by them. So I believe there's three at Central.
Okay, thank you.
I will begin to keep you updated. I actually also will have to start keeping DOE updated, starting the first of July.
More discussion? Not all in favor of the Madison County Central School reg, annual recommendations? Four zero. All right, now we moving on to staff travel, six point five.
We have four trips this evening. We have the annual assessment and accountability meeting. Ms. Thomas will be attending that. We have the BSI Summer Academy. So you see the individuals that are listed there. We also have the PACE and the NEFAC Leadership Summer Conference. So we have kind of staggered and divide, more or less divide and conquer. So I have set that, um, I kind of said, okay, we're not all going to one and then turn around the, a couple of days later and go into another. I said, you can look at the agendas and pick. So we have divided out who's going where. So, uh, these are coming out of our Title II. So I do, and then BSI too, so we all have these. So I do recommend approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the staff travel?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the staff travel.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Thompson to approve the staff travel. Is there any discussion on staff travel? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Okay, six point six.
I'm waiting, um, Mr. Copeland to come up. I will go ahead and, you can come on up. Um, I am happy to report Ms. Roderick has submitted all of our title grants at this time. She's working on the IDEA grant and also an outside COPHS grant, safety grant. So she's also working on that COPHS, C-O-P-S. So that is a safety grant. So we're excited to have her on, working on all of these grants for us.
Ready for me?
Ready for you?
I want to pass out a quick summary here of this is in reference to the 2025, 26. Senate Bill, the conference report that was released Friday, this past the 13th. That's why y'all might receive the summary prior now, but.
Say Friday the 13th.
Well, it's going to be all downhill, pass.
That's this nice document that I provided you and I highlighted Madison on there for you. Oh, maybe it didn't. That's odd because I highlighted it.
This is a, this is a high level summary of the document that Dr. Pickles had sent. That thing takes a Philadelphia CPA to understand. And so I'll briefly go through this and answer any questions after we kind of run through the April financial report that was in your packages. First of all, I'd like to say it's good to be back and working, appreciate the opportunity to work with the district again. And it's good to, to be back here this evening. I'm going to walk through and answer any questions on the one-page summary that was provided in your board package, which is our general fund 10-month fiscal year-to-date financial report. I will say that when we get our feet under us and go in a little bit, I will give a more robust presentation. But I think this will give you a, a fair snapshot of, of where we are the 10 months into the fiscal year. Taking into account that 10 months into the fiscal year, we're 83.33% through the year. And a good gut check I always like to do is to look at where our revenues are. And we're at 84.3% of our budget. So we're right in line with the 10-month progression. And then on the expenses, if you go about not quite three quarters of the way down the page, you'll see the total fiscal year-to-date, 18.4 million. And the total budget expended of 83.2%. So that's a good indication that we're right in line as a total general fund expenditure progression through the first 10 months or 83%. You see the individual line items, there are some overages and unders. We've got, we, we have a few budget amendments that will be made these last two months or will be proposed to be made by this board. And, uh, and then we're also going through an exercise right now. There's a couple of line items on here I can, I'm confident are going to improve. And that's the general administration. We've got to make an adjustment with our property and casualty insurance that's booked at the beginning of the year with a prepaid. It just, I hadn't caught up with it yet. So I think the surprise will be in the right direction there. It, that, that accounts too high right now. And there's some of the other, uh, accounts that are, are indicating over the progression of, of the year-to-date budget. But we're also working with Ms. Roderick, uh, right now to really do a scrub of our grants. And before we have to close those out at the end of the fiscal year. And this is an exercise we've been through before, but, but we're confident that we probably missed some expenditures and we put them in general fund. And they're perfectly allowed to be in our federal funds. And they're ready, written into the, the federal budgets. So that, that's, I've been reminded more than once, that's a priority one. And, and so, and I, and just to mention that, we've worked with Ms. Rod, Roderick before when I was here. And she's very knowledgeable of the grants and, and what we can and can't do. So we're going to commit to, starting at the beginning of the new fiscal year to make sure that we, we really keep a tight monitoring on there. We don't want to get 60% through the year and only have spent 10% of the grants. So it, it's a process we're going to commit to put into play. And, um, again, we'll make a couple of budget revisions in May and June. I don't think anything will be a surprise, but keep in mind that our original budget and our revised budget right now are, are based on the third count. We, we should have received the fourth by now, but we just haven't. So there, there's going to be some revenue adjustments with the, uh, the FEFP funding from the state when we get the fourth count. And we'll drop those in and then we'll make some budget adjustments and explain them on the expenditure lines also.
Okay.
But again, I don't have a crystal ball, but I, I don't, as, as far as what our budget was and what we expected, it, we're, we're right in line at this point.
If it helps you understand fourth count, we should have had the first of April. We did not receive, we did not receive third count until mid-February. And we now have our conference report. So we more or less have not received fourth count information. So we'll have to use our conference report. If that helps any.
And I'm going to move, if y'all haven't, don't have any questions there, and, and please, if you.
I do have a quick question.
Okay, absolutely, Ms. Knight.
And this is something that I can come meet with you to, to clarify. And I know you said you're going to start working towards, you know, a more robust, you know, spreadsheet moving forward. But like in these expenditures, you know, a lot of these are very general categories. Are these going to be broken down a little bit more? Because if not, I want to come meet with you because I want to know like what you're plugging into these categories. Because, you know, like the facilities and there's several different categories there that, you know, like I, I'd be interested to see what's being dumped in there.
Absolutely, and what, what we can, and, and that's something we need to do is, uh, I understand I'll look at the expenditure reports, but we can include a month-over-month detail. It won't be too, too, too large to look at. And then that way, if you need it, you got it. If you don't, you, you don't.
And I know you're playing catch-up and, you know, there's a lot, I just.
That's a, that's an easy.
You know, it's just, it's very hard, you know, like some of these categories for the general public to be looking at it in order to come to us and, and inquire questions, you know, they're, you know, these categories are just very general and generic. So I just, if we're going to be moving forward to, you know, have a little bit more explanation there, you know, then I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
We will, we will absolutely make that happen and then we'll, I'm notorious for overdoing it sometimes, but that's baseline that, that y'all need.
Yes, sir.
So I understand completely.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Again, and, Ms. Gibson?
How about a little update on the chillers that FEMA rejected?
Absolutely.
And, and let me ask you this, is this true 2,572,495 dollars? That's the number I've got for those.
Wait a minute, the chiller project was declined too? I thought it was the roof. So we have the roof and the chillers?
Okay, that's not, may I speak to that? That is not a FEMA project. That's an Essar.
Yes, the chillers are.
The FEMA, the, that's not FEMA, that's Essar dollars. And that is a.
The chillers is FEMA.
No, the chillers is Essar.
That's what I said.
It's not FEMA.
Yeah, you said FEMA.
Oh, it's not FEMA, okay.
No, it's not FEMA.
I was going to say.
No, that's Essar dollars.
We voted on that a long time ago.
Right, yeah.
And that is reimbursement only now.
Right.
So we have to pay upfront and then submit for reimbursement.
Okay.
And Ms. Gibson, you had asked me that, and I appreciate any of you reaching out and asking me questions. That, that really helps and, and helps me prepare better. So Dr. Pickles answering your question was something I was not, I mean, I just received the feedback-
That's okay, we're just, you know-
But I was very pleased that at least we've got it where it's a reimbursement, because we can fund, we can, we can get by paying it if we know we're getting reimbursed. I was worried about that part of it.
Yes.
So that, that was good news, and that's a very fair, fair question there. And, and then we're, we're working to make sure we wrap our hands around the roof project-
Yes.
And make sure we're planning for, for any of these worst-case scenarios that we have, and, and maybe we won't be going through this rodeo again anytime soon.
Your lipstick on to yours.
Any, any other questions I can try to answer or find the answer for? Not, we'll move on to the summary. Okay, this right here, again, as Dr. Pickles had sent y'all earlier, the, the conference report that should be pretty nailed down for our 2025-26 budgeted revenues from the state of Florida. I'm gonna give, I probably put a little too much detail in here, so I'm gonna highlight the points I think need to be highlighted, and then y'all ask questions as needed. But the projected FTE as compared to the current third count that we're operating under, this conference report is projecting a decrease of 82.81 FTE for the 25-26 year. That's the top right-hand number, and you'll see where I have a column with the change in there. If you take that into account as it flows through all the categoricals and the way it's calculated, you're gonna see that total state funding would be projected to be down 734,509 dollars, and again, that's roughly three-quarters of the way down on the page. We come into the next step, which is our local funding, our required local effort and our discretionary local effort, which it's projected up. So you're gonna get to mitigate some of that loss as projected with 240,248 dollars. And you'll see that the total state and local funding as projected for 25-26 is roughly 494,261 reduction over the third count that we're operating under this 24-25 year. We're also seeing a projection with the, we have the Florida empowerment scholarships, and this conference report has an increase in the scholarships for this next year of 30, and right now, the third count, we're operating with 164. So that would be some additional funds that we would have to mitigate. So all being said, the bottom line, 777-408, again, subject to change, but what we're doing right now is what we, what we would do with any organization is mitigating our plan as we move into preparing our final budget for proposal, which will include, obviously, all of our expenditure accounts. And utilizing our, our grant funding as allowed, taking our, our facilities, our, our operations, we all know we're gonna have a chunk, we're gonna have a decrease in the variable cost when the Lee, Pinata, and Greenville schools are, are shut down. So I'm, I'm hoping we can get a more granular plan and, and show how we can just bridge the gap between the proposed reduction and, and what we need to do going forward to meet that deduction. And the budget's a priority, and we, we will stay connected with y'all. And again, please, reach out, Ms. Gibson, I appreciate you asking me some questions, and it helps me stay on top of things. So any other questions of any sorts, I'll try to answer them or find the answer.
I will also state, to this conference report, there was a budget amendment by Senator Hooper. I think they were supposed to vote on it this evening. I was trying to read it earlier today to see how it will actually impact, and I did not get all the way through the budget amendment or the amendment for this. So, but it does, it will impact the FEFP. So as I finally get through the rest of the reading, I'll try to give an update for you.
If there's no more questions, I, again, appreciate the opportunity and reach out if you need me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve the financial report?
Accept.
Accept, accept, accept.
I move to accept the financial report.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hagan to accept the financial report. Any more discussion on it? If not, all approved, or in favor of five zero. All right, let's go with, what, six point seven?
Mr. Reeves, you're up.
Mr. Chairman of the committee. So included with your board materials is a resolution. The resolution has attached to it a quitclaim, a form quitclaim deed. The board had instructed at previous meetings that you were interested in conveying the property, the annex over here across the street to the credit union. So what this does is the, you have to do that by a resolution. The resolution has to find the property's no longer needed for educational purposes and that you feel it's in the best interest of the public to dispose of it in this manner. That's what the resolution does. And then it has attached to it a form quitclaim deed to use. One of the things, and I probably should have thought of this before now, but we put in there a, a limitation that said the property could only be used in the future for the purpose of operating a credit union, the member, the membership of which is open to employees of the board and others. The credit union has brought up, well, they may have other educational-related things that they could do with it. I think the way I would probably recommend we change that is to, to leave in that language, but then add that they could do it for that and other things as may be approved by the board on a case-by-case basis. So if they had a good opportunity to do something, bring it back to y'all, y'all could approve it. And then that way, we're, we're not limiting some things that y'all might really like to be going on over there. I would recommend that we add that to paragraph four of the, of the body of the resolution, and also the intended purposes in the form quitclaim deed. And then the other thing you would need to do on paragraph six, it, I need a date, whenever y'all want to actually convey the title from the district to the credit union. And it doesn't matter to me when that is, but y'all just need to tell me when you want me to do it.
So for the date, did we have any discussion about the fact that it would be beneficial to leave it until the end of the year when the insurance is expired? Or are they just wanting to pay for insurance even though it's already insured?
So, if I may, so Ms. Chivers said they would pay for the insurance, she is aware and stuff. So she, she's aware that it's gonna be covered with insurance, so she will pay, we can give her the cost.
Okay.
So.
Well, but did we wait-
Ms. Chivers, you would like to address?
But we need to verify with FSBIT that, because the thing is, is you can't insure something you don't own. So right now, we insure it as the school district. If we do a quitclaim deed to the credit union, it no longer belongs to us, so that insurance is, is null and void, which means she's got to go buy insurance under the credit union's name. So, you know, like we, we, if we remove that insurance off of our policy now, it doesn't save us $1. So that's why I recommended, you know, we do, we make this transaction, you know, the end of the year when the insurance expires, because the building's already insured and paid for it. But again, that's, that's just something that we had discussed the last board meeting, and I want to make sure that you're aware of.
Yes, I am aware of that. And I told Dr. Pickles that, you know, any cost that if we needed to do that-
You can save, yes.
But I do understand what you're saying, because you can't keep it in that name.
Can we amend it, Mr. Attorney, to say that we are giving her, giving them the property and to include paid insurance up until something, is it something that we can figure out that's going to be legal? So they won't have to get insurance, but we can, we will convey that building to them the end of the year for sure. Something, something legal to that effect.
So we can do the resolution to say that it will be conveyed prior to December 31?
Yes.
And that would be my recommendation, because once you convey it, you no longer have an insurable interest, and that's going to void the insurance. So that, that would probably be the cheapest for everybody. Now, if y'all have a reason you need it earlier, that's fine, but you'd have to pick up your own insurance, is-
I understand that. The only reason that I wanted it earlier is the look of it on the outside.
Yeah, but we can amend the cheap availability.
If I do things to it-
I mean, it would-
To make it more presentable.
We can include that.
If you include, she can go ahead and make changes.
Are you talking about tearing out walls, or are you talking about putting up a sign?
I'm talking about digging up weeds.
I think certainly the board can authorize that. You don't have to put that in a resolution or anything else.
I understand, herb appearance.
Right.
Herb side appearance.
There is some things I want to do on the inside of it that'll take us a few adjustments, but I can wait. That's not anything that has to be-
I don't even think you need to wait for that.
You don't need to wait.
You don't even have to wait for that. I mean, the building is gonna be yours. I'm just, you know, like financially, it just doesn't make sense for you guys to spend, you know, thousands of dollars on insurance that we have already paid for and we cannot get a refund on.
And can't get our money back.
That's a half a year.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
So 12/31?
Yep, so December 31.
Okay.
With the ability for them to, to go ahead and, you know, do what you need to do and what you want to do.
Use the money you would save from insurance.
But I would do, let's do, let's do one motion to approve the resolution with those changes and putting December 31 for paragraph six. Do that, and then we'll come back and do a separate motion to authorize them to make whatever cosmetic changes they want prior to taking time.
Okay, and before y'all make the motion, I do want to thank you for allowing us to stay in the building and not going out. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate your time getting the quitclaim deed up.
Well, we appreciate the service that you provide. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution with the changes that Mr. Reeves?
With all the necessary changes concerned with insurors and the maintenance, what they want to do?
Well, that's gonna be-
I move to, I move to approve the resolution with the changes presented by Attorney Reeves.
And the December 31.
Uh, with the December 31st date.
I second.
Do I have a motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Knight, to approve the resolution conveyance of real property for the credit union? Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor? Five zero. Now we got to-
You need a motion to allow them to make whatever cosmetic changes they would like to make in the meantime.
Okay, I move to give them the authority to make any cosmetic changes to the building that they see fit.
I second.
Whatever you want to do.
Including signage or-
Signage, whatever, flowers, whatever you want to do.
Do I have a motion by Ms. Gibson, and a second by Ms. Thompson, to give the credit union the right to make any cosmetic changes to the-
Building.
Building, or the grounds or the building prior to-
Conveyance.
In advance of the 31st of December.
I will just say, Ms. Gina, any enhancements that you do to the building, just keep documentation for the insurance purposes. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor? Five zero. All right, now, we're going to six point eight, which is the Madison County Employee 2025-2026 School Calendar.
So there's two calendars. There's the employee calendar and then the adult education calendar. So Ms. Thomas worked on this calendar, and then there was a committee, the administrators worked on the calendar, went through, counted the days. They also took our payroll calendar to match the days, to verify days, so that all the correct number of days are verified on here. So it matches the student calendar that was previously approved by the board, I think six weeks before.
April.
Couple months before. So it does match, all the number of days were verified, matches now the payroll dates, because there was a, a date or two off that Ms. Williams had off, but those days were actually calculated. So, do you want to get a motion so we can then discuss?
So do I need a, I'll need a motion to approve the Madison County District Employee 2025-26 calendar?
I move to approve the Madison County District Employee 25-26 calendar.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hagan to approve the Madison County District Employee calendar for 2025-26 school year. Any discussion?
I, I've got a concern. I'm not sure if this calendar, calendars vary depending on if you're 10-month, 12-month, and all that. In, in the past, and I went back a few years, the 12-month employees for the Fourth of July, you know, they, they have the Friday off, of course, but they get the Thursday off for the Fourth of July. Now, I don't see that on here. I, now, this would be the 12-month employees. I, I see it on this right here, as a matter of fact. It says here, July 3rd, which is Thursday, would be a day off. So I'm thinking, maybe we're just not looking at the 12-month employee calendar.
There, I would have to go back and ask Ms. Thomas, Ms. Thomas, why we did not observe on the 3rd like we have in the past.
Yes, because what I'm-
I would have to do that.
Okay, good. That's, if you'll check on that, because-
I know there has been some questions about which day we were going to observe and which days we were not.
Right, and, and we're like, like at the 11th hour, you know, since July 1st begins this business, and they probably have already made their plans.
Oh, no, so they are all on July 3rd for this year. So I, I think it's just something not marked on this.
My guess would be-
According to this, they are off, according to this sheet right here.
Yes.
But my guess would be is Good Friday, because last year, they worked, they were all scheduled to work Good Friday. Remember, we had to approve them to be off, and they are off on Good Friday on this new calendar.
Well, they're always off on Friday during the summer.
No, I'm talking about Good Friday.
Good Friday.
Okay, Good Friday, oh, you said Good Friday, yeah.
Yeah, they were scheduled to work Good Friday.
Well, this might, it might be that we're looking at not the 12-month calendar, you know, because that only affects the 12-month people, of course.
I will verify.
Would you check on that?
Yes, I will do that.
But they are off at Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yes, we are.
Okay, go then.
Is there any other dates that are in question?
No.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? With, with probably the correction on the June 3rd, is it a day or?
No, that's still pending.
We have a different date.
She's verifying for this year, it's not on there for next year.
All right, all in favor? Five zero. All right, now, we're going to-
The staffing plan.
Yeah, the staffing plan, six point nine.
Which was actually on item-
One.
Number one of six point four.
Right.
So let me go back to six point four. So on our staffing plan, approved on April 7th, we did have two guidance counselors listed. The next staffing plan, in speaking to Ms. Brown, she had, she had said she did not need to. However, in speaking with her guidance counselor- guidance counselor, even just the estimated number of 1,000 to 1,100, there is the concern that with consolidation, that students may be overlooked based on what the guidance counselor does. They do not just do schedules. They make referrals. They are dealing with testing. So, there are concerns that children may be left out, left forgotten, overlooked, anything like that. So, there is that request to go ahead and add that back in. A guidance counselor first year, actually, it's for several years, is 11 months, 51,000. That's the current salary. So, and that comes out of general funds. So, there is the request to go ahead and put that second guidance counselor back in for Central School. Now, the other part, we have had interventionist before. I went all the way back to 2019 that I could find in board docs that we have had interventionist. I also have the job descriptions. I think I have enough for everybody, maybe not, if you want to pass those down. This is the job description that was approved back in 2019. I, I thought I'd recalled having interventionist when I was a board member. So, but this is the job description I could find, and I could find them 2019, 20, I could find them approved. Typically, how we would do the interventionist, they served, we brought them in after our data, starting in January, and they worked prior to testing. However, I am asking, and when we all met and went over individually the staffing, and we went over the spreadsheet, I had six. I am asking for four right now to go ahead and start working with our bubble kids, really focusing on the proficiency. As you recall, with our Greenville students, we were in turnaround, moving those kids to Central, we really have to focus on proficiency. So, it's how can we ensure proficiency with our students? And not just focusing on gains, not just trying to increase learning gains, moving these kids to proficiency. So, I'm asking for four. It is written into our title grant, so it's not coming out of our general funds. So, I do ask for your approval to go ahead and add them, so we can, from day one, when we come back, we are hitting the ground and focused on these kids. It will always not be the same children in those groups. It will, those groups should be changing every time. So, I do ask to, for right now, I was focusing on four. From January, I may ask for two more, depends on how much we have available in grant funding.
Okay. All right. So, we, well, I need a motion to add the interventionist and the second guidance counselor at the Madison County Central School. Need a motion?
I move to approve the addition of the second guidance counselor and four interventionists at Madison County Central School.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hagan. Is there any discussion?
I've got some thoughts on this. First of all, our number one priority is getting certified teachers in the classroom. Now, some of us may not agree with that. I'm sorry. We need certified teachers. Okay, we have a tier-one instructional problem here. We, you, we don't want to discuss it, you know, but it's in front of us. If you look at the scores, you'll see, we've got a problem. Okay. And they say you can't intervention your way out of it. So, I think our main concern should be getting the certified teachers in the classroom. You said three vacancies you had?
Three classroom vacancies.
Classroom vacancies, okay. Okay, a bubble. Bubble, in regards to this, as far as I'm concerned, means level twos that are almost level three.
Twos and threes.
Okay.
Could be twos and threes.
It could be ones. Okay, all right. But our main goal should be getting these level ones, moving them. They've got to, and I, it sounds like, you know, we're, I'm not concerned with the grade so much. I want the children to get the instruction, and the low ones are desperate for it. They need it. So, we can say, well, the bubble just will concentrate on bubble kids. I think we should be concentrating on all of the kids, you know, not just the bubble, because that, the bubble will affect the school grade. I realize that. That's why we're, you know, but that, that part right there, just, I'm thinking, I, I see they are teachers. I mean, and I realize it doesn't come out of the general fund, but I, the use of them, I think, is my problem. In other words, I want the certified teachers in the classroom. That's my feelings on it.
You are quite correct, Mrs. Gibson. And let me point out, remember last year, we always talked about certified teachers, and this is my understanding why we need these interventionists, Mr., to start this beginning of the school term. Remember, Greenville had one, had one certified teacher out of all the certified teachers that it was.
But we were in charge of putting the teachers there.
And then, see, those students are coming now, you know, from Greenville.
And, and they're going to need all the.
That, that's exactly.
I, I realize that, yes. So, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'd even be for, I'd be for putting a paraprofessional in each classroom. I mean, in other words, the teacher, as long as you've got a good teacher there, and you have an A, para, that's good. Now, these four will be spread. I don't know how, how, how they, how it'll operate. I'm not sure. You know, four people can only do so much. I realize that. But I think that's, that's my feelings on that. We need to get the teachers in the classroom, and a good teacher can do it.
Well, I served when I was off the board for those four years.
Yeah, I remember you did that.
I did do one, and it was an intense.
Mm-hmm. Bridgette did it too.
Uh-huh, on reading.
Yes. Yeah. No, I, I, I'm sure they'll be put to good use. We're not saying anything negative about that.
And the teachers, they were happy for it, because they were on, they were teaching to grade level, not down, you know, from grade level. That enabled them to teach to grade level, and sometimes that's what happens. In the classroom, teachers are not teaching to grade level. They are teaching below grade level, trying to catch up those students. And as you know, we complained about it last year, the two of us about certified teachers in Greenville did not have them, and we, they were in turnaround, and we're getting those students.
Hopefully, they will get them this year. That's, that's for sure.
We are getting those students.
But, um, that's just, I, I think that the word bubble, in other words, we're just going to target these and these, because they'll, hopefully, they'll get the grade boost up there. I mean, these kids need all that we can give them, and, and especially the level ones.
Right.
And this is not targeting level ones here.
But I think Ms. Hagan hit it on the head when she said that by pulling these, these kids out that need a little bit more one-on-one time, you're allowing the teacher to, to teach the kids that are in the classroom at the level or above, and they're, the teacher's not having to pull back from the kids sitting in the classroom.
I, I agree with that. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm still saying, who are we targeting with these four interventionists? So, that's just my.
And, and I just want to clarify for the record. We have filled all of our teaching positions with certified teachers, with the exception of one at the high school and three at the Central School.
Three.
So, we will be given information of those students who are going to be pulled. You all will have a working plan for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, there was actually somebody that reached out to us and asked about, inquired about a possible part-time teaching position, and actually specifically, or, sorry, a former teacher, but specifically wanting to work with the Greenville students. They felt like that was where they were most needed, and so they are a former certified teacher.
Well, this was the state board's dilemma. Greenville going to Central, and they use that word urgency over and over again. In other words, what's going to become of them? And so, right now, we're saying, and there's many level ones there, these aren't going to be, not addressing that problem, if we're not, if we're just doing the bubble students, there, these are.
But.
Well, Ms. Pickles, you need to go ahead and recommend all six of them to begin with. Instead of four.
That's not on the agenda now.
Okay, but you know, I'm just saying, all six of them, because Mrs. Gibson has a concern here. I have a concern here. And so, instead of the four, we need to go ahead and do the six now.
I will be happy to change my request to six.
Because we, it's needed.
Oh, we just definitely need it.
It depends on who they're targeting. Well, I mean, hey, we love having them, but still, they're addressing the bubble students.
And so, they're going to give us a plan. You all are going to give us a plan.
I will be happy to give you a plan, Ms. Gibson.
Since, since four was on the agenda, I'd rather stick to the agenda. We can come back to that later on.
Dr. Pickles, would you recommend six? I will amend my motion if so.
I will amend that, yes.
Okay.
So, I'm not focused on the school grade. I am focused on proficiency, as what is the, is the focus of the state board, what is also our focus with our BSI team. I am focused on proficiency. So, it's our kids that are a level one that we need to push to a level three. So, those are those kids that we need to push and get them moving.
Well, do we have to use the word bubble?
Well, they're going to be.
When you say bubble, that limits right there. That, that says, we're not going to.
It's the grouping. It's going to be how they're grouped, and it's based on their MTSS data, so our three MTSS specialists. It's them sitting there forming these groups, and those groups are going to change every time. I mean, they're going to change from month to month.
Okay.
So, it's just that particular targeted bubble group each, each month, they're going to change. So, little Susie may be in there this month, but she may increase her proficiency, and she may push herself, move herself out.
Well, and I will also add, you know, like, we've all worked with children enough to know that not every kid relates to an individual the same way. So, a kid might learn something from me a lot differently than they learn something from Ms. Hagan, where I might not be able to reach a kid, but Ms. Thompson can. So, you know, sometimes pulling, you know, somebody else in to do that intervention and teaching them a different way, you know, I might be saying two plus two equals four, but, you know, you show them in a different manner, and all of a sudden, it clicks. You know, sometimes these kids just need a little bit more.
And you are so correct. Those students would not remain in there, because they do so many studies or whatever you want to call it, and then after they do, and they reach that grade level, and they're out of there. Then, more students are recommended in. It might not take three to four weeks.
It should be an ebb and flow. Some move in, some move out.
All right, well, let me, I know one, the kindergarten teacher, let's say, do, do most of the element, let's say K through three, do they have a paraprofessional in there with them?
They're supposed to, and then per our staffing plan, they're allocated. Now, I do know the advertisement has gone out for some additional pairs.
So, so in other words, that is supposed to be happening, the teacher plus the para in each class. Well, see, that's, that's an ideal situation right there. It is. So, all right, well, I've given you my two cents.
I'll move to, I want to amend my agenda, so I amend my motion for the additional guidance counselor and six interventionists.
My second still stands.
We have a motion by Ms. Thompson, and a second by Ms. Hagan, to amend the first motion, instead of four interventionist, six interventionist. Any more discussion?
Will these six be covered under our, how, how will they all, all six get paid for?
So, we did not put that, write that many into our title grant, so once it is approved, we will most likely have to go back and amend.
Okay, you can amend it.
Any more discussion? Yes, ma'am?
No, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hagan's ready to go.
All in favor?
I got my six.
Superintendent items. So, if we go back to the presentation, I met with Ms. Tiffany Martin several weeks ago. She wanted to make a presentation. She was unavailable tonight. So, she wanted to make a presentation regarding community partnership schools. So, I wanted to bring this to the board in the spirit of transparency. Yes, I could have gone ahead and just signed the agreement. So, with the Children's Home Society of Florida, signing agreement, all that is doing is saying, yes, we authorize the Children's Home Society to go ahead and on our behalf, begin to seek out the two partnerships needed and start the funding grant process and seek possible grant funding. The Children's Home Society would be the grant recipient, so they, it would not be the district, but they would seek a grant on behalf of the district. So, there's one over in Jefferson County. You'll see down there a list of these schools that are a community partnership school. They go and find a college to partner with, and then your health organization. So, most likely, it would be North Florida College, and then our local hospital. And then they would start the grant process. So, they, then they would hire a director, and then they would, for each area. So, I, I seek your approval to go ahead and just sign the agreement. It does not commit us to anything. All it does is more or less give them the, similar to our fleet, gives them the authorization to go ahead and seek the grant funding. If they are successful in receiving the grant, then an MOU would come back to the board at that time, and then we would approve the MOU. So, any questions on the presentation that was attached?
I mean, I have a lot of questions on this program. You know, I, I reached out to a couple of the other districts that are working with it, and, you know, there's some concerns about, you know, their contractual obligations being met and things like that. So, you know, I mean, like, if you want to entertain this, and you want to see what the proposal is going to be, you know, that's one thing, but I, I definitely do have a lot of questions and concerns in what their part for the district will be.
And that memorandum of the statement, we can opt out, you know, have something in that we can opt out when we want to.
So, when I did ask her about a financial, we can do an in-kind. There is nothing that specifically states we have to do a monetary. We can do an in-kind, like providing office space, furniture, computers, things like that, for that monetary piece. So, the other concern in speaking to someone is the director that is typically hired, and making sure they understand that rural districts are very different from urban districts, and making sure the right person is the best fit for our schools. So, that was the other thing that was really pointed out. I do recommend it, and let's see, it is a competitive grant. However, we do fit several checkboxes. So, one is we are a rural community, so that's kind of a checkbox for us. We do not currently have a community partnership school in, with our schools. And so, speaking to her, I did recommend Central School, since that would be our largest school. So, we would utilize that. However, since the schools are so close together, you know, one thing could kind of spill over to the other.
And those concerns that you have with this night, we can workshop this.
Oh, yeah.
And when we workshop this, we can get those concerns that you have.
Fronting that.
And we will deal with them. I'm sure they are valid.
They would not hear anything from the grant till July, August. It's kind of a quick turnaround for them to submit, and then for them to hear. So, we would not possibly hear any notification till, for the board to have to vote on anything till most likely August. So, if the board is okay, I will sign the agreement for them to go ahead and just start, get started on our behalf to see.
I agree.
Let me, let me, one other thing. I mean, they don't go out in our community and try to get people to, to, to sign on with them.
As far as to partner?
Yeah.
So, if, if there is a need. If, if there is a need, we can always tell them, and they will go work on our behalf so that we're not having to do it. We can tell, hey, we want to go partner with ABC entity. They'll go make the partnership on our behalf. So, we can give them entities to go and work with, that we typically partner with.
Well, but I know one of the, well, we, we can deal with that later.
If I make a suggestion, you can always.
Well, one of the, one of the concerns from another district that's partnering with them is that in that situation, the funds go into, you know, through that program. And then that program decides what of those funds is going to go into whatever, whatever we were seeking. So, if we have Project A who is seeking, you know, a partnership or a donation of $5,000, and $5,000 comes in, you know, they could say, okay, well, you know, the money comes, funnels through us, and here, we're going to give you $3,000. You know, so there's a lot of questions and clarifications. You know, so there's a lot of questions and clarifications that, you know, like, again, our community is hit up a lot already, you know, I'm a business owner in this community, trust me, at my door at least three times a week, you know, for something, so, you know, I, we need to make sure that we're, we're not jeopardizing the relationships that we have with our other programs, between our sports and our arts and, you know, all of our other programs, to lose funding and donations from, you know, our local donors, because now we have somebody else that's hitting them up as well, you know, that's one of my concerns.
And they will be overburdened. Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think if y'all want to just see, you could always authorize the superintendent to authorize the application for the grants, but that the board would not be obligated until you took further action by motion second, majority vote.
All right. All in favor of Dr. Pickles?
You got to have a motion?
I got to have a motion for that. I need to have a motion for allowing Dr. Pickles to go ahead and, what is that, Thompson?
Community partnership.
Yeah, get a.
Hi.
Community partnership.
Information.
Information.
That's a word.
I knew that we.
It's entered into the agreement to seek the funding, that's all that's authorizing them to do.
Enter into a motion.
Enter a agreement to seek the funding. Do I have a motion for that?
I thought you started.
Go ahead. I knew that we approved the recommendation from the superintendent to go ahead and seek the information that we need for the community partnership, and for her to assign, to sign that agreement.
Provided the board's not obligated without further action.
Provided that we're not obligated.
The obligation comes with the MOU, which will come back to this board.
We'll have workshop it by then.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hagan. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Got a second by Ms. Thompson, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Four, one with Ms. Knight opposed. All right, let's move.
So, the, again, as I had stated earlier under the financial, hopefully, we'll have a budget approved this week, there's several changes we're having to make based on some recent law changes. The FEFP is the biggest thing I've been really trying to watch to see, as Mr. Copeland told you, it is a reduction, which is the reason building out our staffing based on projected FTE has been so important of trying to go through and review. As you recall, we do have to increase our instructional salaries this year based on the three-year plan, so, that's the reason it's very important that we really monitor those lines. Mr. Copeland will also tell you, I have been sitting there very focused on our general fund numbers, especially when I requested our three-year expenditure of our grants, and a lot of our grant monies has not been expended, and I'm questioning the why. So, did actually look at one of them today, and there's some monies from a particular grant that is being charged to general funds and not coming from the grant or allocated to the grant. So, we're going to try to shore it, we're going to meet in the morning and try to review that and start trying to shore that up. So, if you will recall from when I was in this position before, I'm very focused on spending our grants first and watching our general fund dollars. So, we will monitor that, try to definitely do any corrections. We are also, at this point, trying to finish out contract payouts, and so, there's a lot of corrections we're having to do with that, just to the incorrect way payroll and contracts were entered, some are, the board stated they did not want to take money back from anyone, so, we, there, we're making those corrections, but we're not trying to recoup the monies, but actually, some people are owed money, so, we have really been trying to do that with all the 10-month, got all those corrected, working on the 11 and 12-month employees now, since their pay comes effective June 30th. So, trying to just get those so that come July 1, we can start fresh with this. There's, there's just a lot of issues, so, we are literally almost touching every employee trying to correct these. So, we are, finance office is very busy, making a lot of those corrections at this moment. So, that's it for the moment, I will let you know as soon as we have this final FEFP and to see how this amendment might impact it. That's it at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
I had one thing, on the resolution and everything with the credit union, it didn't cross my mind at the time, we're all going to be gone December 31, this office is going to be closed, if we can, let's change that date to December 15, and then that way, it'll just, you know, have to get about two weeks more of insurance, which shouldn't be that big a deal, but we'll change that date, if y'all can amend your, do a motion second to amend the motion to have the date as December 15 instead of December 31.
Who, who?
Devin.
I did. I move to amend the motion for the resolution to be done on December 15.
For the title to be conveyed on December 15.
For the title to be conveyed on December 15.
And then Katie second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Hagan, and to. To approve the.
Resolution.
Resolution. Title confence to December 15, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Thank you. And then, the superintendent passed out, some questions had come up about what we did when we conveyed the old school to Lee, and so, this, to the town of Lee, and these are the documents that we did, there's a deed, a resolution, and a contract. Now, when we conveyed that old property to the town of Lee, we did not put any restrictions on that conveyance, but the town of Lee paid us for that property by giving a reduced rate on the water, the charges for the water to the present Lee school, and that's all set out on page two of the contract. So, that, like I said, you have very broad, and the same statutes were in effect at this time, you have very broad authority to do what you want to with the property, in that case, the thought was, well, they would pay something, and so, you wouldn't convey it with restrictions, but that was just to clarify. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Gibson.
I just have a request, and it goes back to posting things on our agenda the week before, when, like, we didn't receive this until we sat down here today, and I realize there's a lot of activity at the end, but this is what I call a working document. In other words, Monday, we might hire Mr. Brown, and Tuesday, Mrs. Gibson may quit. So, in other words, it's, but still, it's, it should be visible. Something happened earlier today, I had no idea, because I hadn't seen this yet until I sat down, so it puts us in a, oh, okay, I didn't know about it. If possible, if we could make it, and what I mean working, I mean, you know, add and put it as we go along.
And I actually agree with Ms. Gibson on that.
Just because, it just kind of makes us look like, well, I didn't, you know, we're not, we don't know until we get here.
If I may, so, I could have posted it with three instructional recommendations.
Yes.
And I think it was one resignation, and then, all of, as of Tuesday, when I had everything else, everything else was visible, all of a sudden, Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday, and then I had a flood today come in.
I realize that, and I know this is what happens.
And it was like, oh, wow.
Yeah.
In fact, at five o'clock.
Well, if we could just try to keep it flowing, let's put it that way, you know, whatever you know, just put it on there.
It's a live document.
It's a live working document.
I can always post the one and then give you the update, and.
Okay.
And I know it has been the previous administration's way of doing things, and it was a pet peeve for me as well with the previous administration, you know, I, we discussed this as well, I would prefer it to be a moving document online, available to us on a continuous basis as well.
Well, thank you.
On that Monday, if there's no thing, just put it on there, and then add everything.
Add and subtract.
You just keep.
I can tell you, each time I got ready to upload it today, I would get another email, and.
It's going to be.
Yeah.
That it, Ms. Gibson? That it?
Yes, thank you.
And Hagan?
I just want to thank everybody that showed up for the meeting tonight, and I just want to thank Ms. Jada and Little Major for coming and doing our prayer for us, I look forward to it, every board meeting, having a student up here, I think it's been a great addition to the, to the board meeting, so, thank you all for coming.
Ms. Thompson?
I would also like to thank everyone for showing up tonight, and Major, you did a wonderful job, welcome back, Mr. Copeland, and thank you for a wonderful job presenting our finances to us tonight.
Okay, thank, thank you everybody that's here, all to us, we appreciate you coming, sure do, and thank you all, board members, for everything you all do, because I know you do a lot, a whole lot, people just don't know, but we appreciate you, appreciate you, Ms. Copeland, appreciate you, Isaac, appreciate you, Tammy, I think I appreciate you, bro. Appreciate you.
We got extra prayer of you tonight, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
And I appreciate Major coming and doing that, and Jada and Roy bringing it, and if nothing else, we're going to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Hey, I learned at the meeting the other day, you don't have to say that.
Oh, well, not even.